Good evening, everyone. How you doing tonight?
Great, thank you.
Let's get things started here with the recognizing that this is the City Council meeting of Santee and it's Wednesday, August 14th, 6:30 PM. All council members are present. And tonight, the invocation will be presented to us by Pastor James Hewnick. And he comes to us... Well, let me do this little biology first on you, because we spent some time. Biography. What did I say?
Biology.
We could do that, too, if you want.
Let's not.
Let's not, okay.
Biology of the pastor?
So, it's what I was dealing with earlier with some things. So anyways, Pastor James Hewnick attended Concordia University, Wisconsin. Concordia University, Wisconsin is a Lutheran higher education community committed to helping students develop in mind, body, and spirit for service to Christ in the church and the world. He's married with his wife, Christian, in 2003, moved to St. Louis, Missouri, where he studied at Concordia Seminary. Pastor Hewnick went on to serve several churches in the Chicago area for his next 13 years of ministry. I was just back in Chicago, so I thought about you as a matter of fact. And let's see, Pastor Hewnick is excited about serving both the congregation and the El Cajon community. He loves helping others see the beauty and grace of Jesus Christ as seen through the teachings of the Lutheran Church to give them the comfort and peace only Jesus can give. In his free time, he enjoys photography, researching Lutheran history, writing, and cooking. Wow, that's a... When do I come over for dinner?
Anytime.
So, okay. Well, we thank you for being here tonight, and we ask that you pray for our country, our state, and of course, our city council. And we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be presented tonight by our own Michael Coyne. Please rise.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, Heavenly Father, by your mercy, you have given us all that we need to support us. You have given us your Son, Jesus Christ, by whose death and resurrection you have opened the way to eternal life. And by your mercy, you have established the governance for the good of your people. We ask that you bring wisdom to all those who are in authority, to Joseph, our president, Gavin, our governor, and all who make and administer our laws. Especially today, we ask that you bring your wisdom to this meeting, that those who are here would consider the plans of action ahead of them with wisdom, that they would bring about justice in this community, and that you would watch over all of them as they do their best to make the good plans that you have given them. Through Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
If you would join us in our nation's pledge by placing your right hand over your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Michael. So, tonight, we're going to start off the meeting with some recognitions. These are certificates of recognition for the Santee Youth Business Fair and award to the Santee Youth Entrepreneur of the Year. And I'm going to ask Vice Mayor Trotter to join me down in the front. And we're going to call some names of folks to come up and get some certificates, and then we'll do an overall presentation. Terry, did you want to open with anything?
I wanted to thank the council for taking the...
We're going to get you to come down and use a microphone. So, come on down. Sorry, I didn't have a chance to ask you ahead of time.
Good evening. I wanted to thank the council for inviting the youth entrepreneurs here today. They've been working hard for the last year to build their own businesses, and I've been impressed with their growth. And that wouldn't have been as effective without the support of the city leaders and other businesses in Santee. And we're really grateful. And you'll get a chance to meet some of them today. School did just start, so not all of them are here, but you'll see some outstanding young people. Thank you.
How about if you come up here and you can help us out? Moral support.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. And parents, grandparents, great-grandparents, whatever we have here, feel free to come up into this area and take all the pictures you want as we do this. So, don't be shy about it, because this is important for you and your families, because it's a very important day for us, too. Let's go ahead and get the first certificate. What we're doing is going to find out if they're here or not first.
Yeah.
Okay. And all of the awards are very similar. And they say, City of Santee Artisan Excellence Award. And this certificate is proudly presented in recognition of Mary Sarmiento for the Crochet Shelter. The City of Santee would like to recognize Marley Sarmiento for their excellent business ideas and execution at the Santee Youth Business Fair hosted by Momentum Tutoring. Come on down.
Marley!
If I call your name, just come on down. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's turn over here and get some pictures. You can come up forward if you want.
Youth entrepreneurs, please stand up so you're ready to come on up.
Yeah. Don't be shy. Come up, get the pictures. Welcome. There you go. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and stand. And what we'll do is at the very end, we'll have everybody take one big picture. How's that sound for everyone? Certificate of Santee Charismatic Communicator Award. That's almost difficult to say.
If you can say it, you're a charismatic communicator.
Easy for you to say.
I write it.
This certificate is proudly presented in recognition of Jasmine Haas. And I hope I said the name right. And the City of Santee would like to recognize Jasmine for her charismatic communication at the Santee Youth Business Fair hosted by Momentum Tutoring. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Step over here, and we'll get some pictures.
And this is for you guys at the council, so you can share some feedback in.
Well, thank you.
Jasmine also started the business of Sussy Free. She invested her college money into buying a machine, and it's already paying off.
Oh, excellent.
Freshman at West Hills today. I bought some of those.
And the City of Santee Aromatherapy Delights Award. Certificate is proudly presented in recognition of Isabella Vega. Sweet scents. I got to tell you, when I went up there and I smelled these different scented candles, I couldn't believe how spot-on they were. And I think especially the birthday cake or something like that. Excellent. Well, come on up. So, this says, City of Santee would like to recognize Isabella Vega for their delightful candles and business ideas at the Santee Youth Business Fair. There you go. Now, let's turn around and get our picture taken. Great, thanks. And this is the Sustainability Award. And this certificate is proudly presented in recognition of Morgan Ochalek. Morgan, how are you doing? And this is for the business Bee Genuine. I got to tell you, you guys were so knowledgeable about where that bee stuff came from. What do you call it?
Honey?
Honey! See what I'm saying? You know, I got out of you. Now, the City of Santee would like to recognize Morgan for her excellence in sustainable business ideas at the Santee Business Fair. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, let's turn around and get pictures. You want to start filling in on this end here? There we go. All right. Are they all for the... Okay. All right.
Flowers and flames.
Oh, yeah. Well, I happen to know some of these. So, let's see. All three of them? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and call your names up to come up before we do all of these. And they are Ramona Lutheran and...
Wait, I think Ramona Lutheran is their school.
Yeah.
And we also titled them Flower and Frame. So, we're doing some things with this business.
Okay, you know what? Since we messed this up, which it does happen from time to time, what we're going to do is, we're going to go ahead and present these tonight, but we're going to, we could probably take them back and then let Terry...
About Chloe Perkins.
Redo it, so...
Let's start with that. Chloe, come on up.
Flower and Flame, come on up. We have Dakota, and that should be Madison, right?
Okay, Madison.
Madison's not here, that's why.
Madison? Okay. See, this is the fun part about what we do. So, come on up here. And... Okay, well, I'm going to read from yours. How's that sound? And this is for your Green Thumb Award. Let me see your thumbs. Boy, those are pretty green. And this is for Madison. Madison, what's your last name?
I'm Dakota.
Never mind.
Dakota, what's your last name?
Jeff, I don't want to hear about this later, okay?
Simonidis.
Following after my mayor.
So, okay, I have Dakota, and I have Chloe. All right. And the City of Santee would like to recognize you for your great plant eccentric business ideas at the Santee Youth Fair. And here you go. All right, now, let's come over here and get some pictures. Do you get everything you need, Jeff? The reason why I'm so personal, Jeff and I went to have known each other since junior high school. So, his kids are like, boy, his grandkids are like my grandkids' age, so... All right, next. And then, great-grandma's even here tonight, so I got to watch out for her. Okay, this is the Jewelry Artist Award, and it goes to Savannah Savvy Griffiths. And it's for Sunshine Jewelry. Are you here? Come on down.
Savannah, are you wearing... Are you wearing some of your jewelry tonight?
Yes.
Let's show it off to everybody, guys.
I have two bracelets on, and I have one of my chokers and some earrings I made.
And this certificate says basically that we want to recognize you for your wonderful jewelry products at the Santee Youth Business Fair. And there actually is a mistake in this one also, so my staff is batting a thousand. And so, we'll take this back later so we make sure you get the right one. How's that sound?
But you can hold it for now, Savvy.
This is the right, this is the right one, but it has a wrong name. So, here we go. Come on over here, and we'll get these pictures. All right. Now, we do have an overall winner. And I'm praying tonight that this one's right. Help me out, Pastor. We may need a little help on this one. So, tonight, you know what? I'm going to step back for a second. And I just want to say that regardless of, if there's an overall winner or not, every single one of the people that were involved, the young people involved, you're all winners. Every single one of you. It's difficult enough as somebody who leads a city to look out to adults who might be entrepreneurs in our community. But it's so exciting to actually see and meet young people who are definitely going to be and already are entrepreneurs within our community. And I just want to encourage you to stay here, build your businesses here, and thrive here, and then buy homes here, because that's always self-sufficient.
And join service communities.
And so, and you know what? I'm also going to do one other thing here. Dustin, why don't you go ahead and grab this? And the reason why I want to do this is because it's great for me to give out all these certificates. But you know, Dustin is with me at the fair the whole time. And we walked together, and we actually worked and talked about the different booths and graded them together. So, I'd like you to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like the mayor said, this is actually the second year this has gone on. The first year was over at West Hills High School. This year was at Santana High School. So, kudos to Terry for putting this on and making this happen, because these are our future, as we talk about the kids. And this entrepreneurship that we saw is very, very impressive. I believe this is a little bit bigger than last year, if I remember how many people were there. Like the mayor said, we walked around, and we had, I don't know, it was 10 point, 10 sections to kind of grade them on and go through. Some of it was about their product, if they made the product themselves, their branding, the, some of the signage, you know, things like that. So, we graded everybody based upon their presentation and also how they spoke and how they talked. And who this year, who we chose as Sante's Youth Entrepreneur of the Year is Gemma Clancy from Mexican Gems. You're welcome, ma'am. You want to say a few words? You ready?
I'm very happy about this. Thank you.
Well, we thank you, and we appreciate it. We hope you keep this going, okay? Because it's very cool what you've done.
Okay. Stay right here. And now, we're going to ask you to probably come in a little bit closer on the ends, because that way we get a bigger picture of everybody.
And you can come closer, Savvy. You're a little...
This is part of... I promise not to bite real hard.
Yep, perfect.
By the way, Gemma was much...
They come with paparazzi.
Yeah. Gemma was much more talkative at the fair.
Look in the middle.
Just look in the middle at this point.
One more in the middle.
How you doing with that one there?
One more time. There we go. Gotcha.
Anybody else want a picture? Okay, I'm signing autographs later, and so is Gemma.
We heard a question of what Mexican Gems was. Gemma, do you want to explain?
Yes, come on.
You're about to turn your...
So, I import stuffed animals from Mexico as well as making things myself. They're very colorful, cute, and since they're made by the Mexican artisans, it supports more than one business when you buy one.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, ladies. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, I was there shopping, so I'll tell you what I bought. I bought freeze-dried M&Ms, a soap, a little cute chicken, honey from Lakeside, and I think that was it. Well done. I just shopped.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
For those of you who need to get those certificates, why don't you hand those to me now? We'll make sure that we get them all. Take care.
You keep it, you keep this, and we'll get them. I'll make sure I work with a group.
Oh, okay, then. Here you go. That may be worth money one day, seeing as how it has an air on it.
Yeah, air coins are worth a lot.
Exactly.
Thank you, guys.
All right, let's rock and roll with the rest of the show. That takes us to our consent calendar. Before I go on with this, just to let everybody know that the protocol here is that if there's something that you want to speak on tonight, that the speaker slip must be in prior to that item being called. We don't accept speaker slips after the item is called. So, and on consent calendar, some people get confused by that. So, if you wanted to speak and you didn't get your speaker slip in, I'll understand, and I'll think about whether or not we can go ahead and take that tonight. We'll ask the council if they'll accept that later on. All right, so the consent calendar is items one through 10. And do I have a motion to approve that consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Did we have any speaker slips on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And that takes us to non-agenda public comment. Do we have any speaker slips?
Yes, sir. We have three speakers. The first speaker is Gary Bloom.
Thank you. Gary?
Thank you. My name's Gary. I'm the founder of the Total Altruism Project. So, it's that sign over there. The way this came about is I was walking through the park with a dog, and I picked up a piece of litter, and somebody thanked me for that. But I was a biology teacher back in the days at Claremont High School, and I loved the second law of thermodynamics. And so, I was relating to that, to it, that as soon as I went and picked it up, I felt good. That person who thanked me for it, they felt good for my action, which made me feel even better. And my very next thought was, what could I do to replicate this so that more people would feel good? And that's when this idea came to me, of putting litter-grabbing stations around the parks spaced out along a popular walkway with these tools hanging on, if they have a net on it. And if people wanted to, out of an act of kindness, they can go around and pick up litter. I installed it, got a foundation, a nonprofit foundation. I was consulting with the City of San Diego, because I was living, I lived there, and put it in the Allied Gardens Rec Center Park, November 1st, 2022. And it was a hit. Everyone uses it. One of the parks, the area manager for Parks and Rec has her office there. She'd see as many as 15 people in groups a day using it. The ground maintenance workers loved it. They were going around seeing everyone clean up. They'd go back to their workspace and share what they saw, so their workspace was improved. Their budget improved because of that. I'm assuming this part, because they were spending less time. In fact, we did a survey with them. They had 50% less litter pickup duties that they were doing. Mesa College, I got them involved in it. They do the science of it. I was a science teacher. They study the whole park, get a, it's a biostatistics class. They get a baseline for the litter. I install my project, the litter drops by almost 50%, and sometimes even more than 50%. So, the environment benefits, people benefit, local public benefits. I'm at Lake Murray Community Park and the ballfields. No complaints at any of these parks. San Carlos Rec Center Park, Princess del Cerro Park, it's been there for years, and no complaints. Mesa College extended their study outside of the park. We find that people will take the litter-grabbing tools, because I walk their dog twice a day. They'll take it home with them, pick up litter in their neighborhood, bring it back for the later walk. And so, the areas around the park, the neighborhoods are improving. Everyone talks about it. In less than two months, I got a proclamation from the City of San Diego, naming that Total Altruism Project Day for Valentine's Day 2023. I got a $10,000 grant from Supervisor Joel Anderson for the Neighborhood Reinvestment Program. I recently talked with Eric King over here just about Big Rock Park. I got introduced into Big Rock Park by a bunch of Girl Scouts who are using this to do a community...
Thank you. Time is up.
The next speaker is Brenda Hammond.
Hi, Brenda Hammond. I'm not going to rehash my public comments in El Cajon and La Mesa yesterday. You can go back and watch them if you want to. If they're not edited, they might be. But I'd like to share my point. Local residents and businesses concerned should be listened to and resolved if possible. Otherwise, they might stop reporting. And that would not be good, especially if it's a national security concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
The final speaker is Kathleen Lippett.
Hi. That altruism project is such a tough act to follow. My name is Kathleen Lippett. And good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm a public health practitioner and public policy researcher, and I'm here tonight to share the findings of the recent grand jury report for San Diego on the finances, health, and law impact of Prop 64. The California Legislative Analyst had asserted that most of the resulting taxes would go to support youth programs, environmental protection, and law enforcement. Advocates claim that legalization would result in improperly regulating a legal marijuana market. The antithesis of that has occurred. Opponents predicted increased teen drug use, law enforcement issues, and mental health problems, and that potential tax revenues would not compensate for the harms to youth from marijuana abuse, addiction, DUIs, marijuana poisonings among children, a 1,700% increase in marijuana poisonings among small children. The marijuana tax was a general tax, moreover. It was not a special tax. So, the proceeds went to the general fund, and there is no way to trace where those revenues were used. It's a gross reset, receipts tax, and so nearly all the cash businesses allowed for gross underreporting. An analysis found that for every dollar spent in the legal economy, $3 are spent in the black market, and no taxes are paid on those. The weakening of marijuana from felonies to misdemeanors led to more crime and less law enforcement. Far more importantly, though, data from 52 children's hospitals showed 13-fold increase in marijuana-related hospitalizations for children under six, a lower likelihood of graduating high school, lower school performance challenges to their working memory, higher rates of self-harm. California is now number 38 in the nation on educational process progress, 38 in math, and 29 in reading. Marijuana-related ER visits for those 65 and over have gone up 1,800%. The yearly cost for incarcerated individuals is $138,000 a year, and the yearly salary for a prison guard is $152,000. Prevention is far more significant. Treatment resources are scarce, expensive, and carry a very high rate of recidivism. And a recent report found that California ranked eighth among the most dangerous states in the Union to raise children in. New Mexico was number one. But also, the increased risk of schizophrenia.
No further speakers, Mayor. No further speakers, mayor.
Thank you, Kathleen. Thank you. That takes us to item number 11, which is a public hearing for tentative parcel map, TPM-2024-0002, to divide a 4.79-acre residential parcel into two separate parcels located at 9953 Buena Vista Avenue in the high-density residential R-22 Zone, APN 384-162-0400, and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA, pursuant to the SEQA Guideline Section 15315. The applicant is New West Investment. Rachel.
Yes, thank you. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. Tonight's item for your consideration is a request for a tentative parcel map to divide a residential parcel into two separate parcels. The 4.79-acre parcel is located at 9953 Buena Vista Avenue in the high-density residential or R-22 Zone. The low-medium-density residential zone is present on both the east and west sides of the property, with medium, medium-high, and high-density residential zones to the north and light industrial to the south across State Route 52. This aerial is looking southwest towards the project site outlined here in yellow. Surrounding land uses include single-family residential to the east and west, the Hawaiian Village Mobile Home Park, and village-run apartments to the north, and State Route 52 to the south. Industrial and commercial land uses are also located south across State Route 52, and the Sharp Reef Steely Medical Center is west of the site as well. This view is also looking south from Buena Vista Avenue towards the project site. The tentative parcel map before you shows how the parcel would be divided. A new lot line shown here in blue would bifurcate the existing parcel into two smaller parcels. In 2022, as part of the City of Santee's General Plan Housing Element, the subject site was rezoned from low-medium-density residential or R-22, or R2, I apologize, to R-22. The lot split is proposed as the owner would like to retain the single-family residence on a separate lot from any future potential R-22 development. Parcel 2 would be 0.98 acres and retain all existing structures, including the existing single-family residence. Parcel 1 would be 3.81 acres. No development is proposed with the lot split, and the dividing of the existing parcel does not approve the use of parcel 1. Any potential impacts, such as those related to traffic and needed mitigation, would be evaluated for parcel 1 when the site is developed. So staff has determined the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15315 because the project proposes the subdivision of residential land with an average slope of 3.8% into two parcels. The project is consistent with the General Plan and Santee Municipal Code, and all services and access to the proposed parcels are available. Through review of the project and project site, it was determined that none of the exceptions to the exemption found in SEQA Guideline Section 15300.2 apply to the project. Therefore, staff recommends the city council conduct and close the public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and approve the project by adopting the resolution before you. The applicant is present tonight to speak on behalf of the project and answer any questions from council. Staff is also available to answer any question, and this concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to speaker slips.
The first speaker is Levon Simendez.
It's okay. I have a countdown for that.
Levon, your time doesn't start until you start speaking. It does not. You're good until you start speaking. So tell him to...
Okay, thank you.
Before you get started, JJ, if there's another outburst like that, can you remove that gentleman?
I'm here because I live on Rhodes Court, which is right behind the property that they want to split up. The splitting up of the property doesn't bother me as much as my neighbors. We all agree that we just don't want two-story houses there. And when I moved here 20 years ago with my husband, we thought it was an ideal place. Santee really is a nice place to live, but that would take away... I couldn't see the mountains. You can't, I wouldn't have the sun in my backyard. And I have a lovely rose garden, and they love the sun. And I just don't understand why they keep bringing this up. It's like, it's actually like they are teasing us, you know? Well, you wait a while, and then you get a notice that they're going to do this, they're going to do that. So that's why I'm here, to see if we can't go another way on that property, and why it can't just be one story like the rest of us out there. And I know I speak for my neighbors. I've talked to them. And I appreciate your time, and I hope that you will listen to some of us and see where we're coming from. I'm 94 years old. I would like to at least have it till after I'm gone, but I'd like my neighbors to have something nice also. So would it be possible, since I'm here, that I ask for something else on Rhodes Court? I did ask the lady when I called, and she said, she thought I could, but I don't want to...
Levon, we can actually only take testimony on the item.
Okay, not now.
Talk to me later about that.
Okay. Do you want me to do it another time then, John?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'd be happy to. Thank you all for everything you do do for us. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Leah Moreno.
Hello, Leah.
Hello. I'm here again. As some of you know...
Pull the microphone a little bit closer, please.
Some of you know I represent our family, and I'm just going to give you a little history, if it's okay. My parents bought that property September 14th, 1967, which makes it 57 years that we've owned that property and have never done anything. My mom has turned 90. She'll be 91 in January. The living trust, let me back up. Her wishes are being fulfilled right now, and in the living trust, if you could put that map back up to where it shows our property, I don't know if that can be done or not.
We can do that.
Okay. Because once you see it...
Could we pause the clock for a minute while we, while we put it up?
Is this the one you want?
That's it. Thank you, thank you. When you're looking at this parcel 2...
That's okay. Let's just go ahead and go if it...
Okay.
Give an extra couple of seconds or so.
Parcel 2, when you were seeing that, that square, that parcel has the home, the well, and all those trees. Everything else is not developed. Mom wishes to have that separate and kept that way. So that property, at this time, we have no plans to develop. But her wishes are that that's what, I'm sorry, for it to be divided, is so that that house, the well, everything right there stays. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. No questions?
No, I think that was pretty understandable.
Thank you.
The final speaker is John Cloud, who said he would speak if needed. He's a consultant for the family.
You guys need to have him talk?
Hello, John Cloud, New West Investment.
John, we're going to go ahead. I don't have any questions or anything.
No problem. Thanks.
Yeah, but thanks for being here, though. Appreciate that. Okay, council, any comments or questions? So is there a motion to...
We're just trying to clarify that it's just the property...
It's just the lot split.
Yeah.
Right, just the lot split.
So there is no buildings. That's an important thing. So I'll make the motion.
Okay, great. Have a motion and a second? Let's, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All those other issues will take up another time.
If they ever come up.
If they ever come up. Yeah, that's okay. We'll be talking about it. This takes us to continue business item number 12, which is an update on Sportsplex USA, recent construction of mini soccer arena, and approval of Seventh Amendment in our community services. Nick?
Thank you, mayor. Good afternoon, mayor, council members. The item we see before you today is an update on Sportsplex USA, recent construction of mini soccer arena and approval of the Seventh Amendment. At the May 25th, 2022, City Council made the Sixth Amendment to the Sports Parks Maintenance and Operations Service Agreement with Sportsplex USA was approved. Within that approval, the city allowed but not required Sportsplex USA to install a mini soccer arena field, provided that the city had oversight over the bidding and installation of the project in compliance with Public Contract Code and the Santee Municipal Code. Furthermore, we did, we were informed, Sportsplex issued a request for bids on October 3rd, 2022, with bids due November 23rd, 2022. One bid was received by Sportsplex, which was from 3D Enterprises in the amount of $676,000. Sportsplex USA did not move forward with the project at the time. Furthermore, I do want to add, nothing was brought forward to the city council regarding the bidding process, as it was a Sportsplex project, with the city as an oversight. The project was not awarded or rejected, the bid was not accepted, and the project did not move forward at the time. Moving forward, on March 2024, the city became aware of completed unapproved construction of the mini soccer arena field. All correctable action items have been completed, but two. The project was not bonded, which was one, and the turf performance items related to compaction testing and any relative reports for the subgrade and aggregate-based materials for the turf. We did not receive those testing materials. And because of that, the city cannot file a notice of completion for the project, nor can the city substantiate completion of all related work for the synthetic turf field system. The imagery you see before you delineates where the improvements took place in an orange square, about 0.1 acres of new development. It's surrounded by the soccer compound, which is two other synthetic soccer fields there. Sportsplex USA accepts responsibility for any liability, including costs to repair, replace, and remove the synthetic turf field systems associated with the failure of the mini synthetic turf field, its subgrade, drainage, or any other items related to its construction. The original agreement was entered into September 13th, 2006, and the following milestones are listed here for reference. The remaining issue is whether to extend the agreement for another 10 years. The current expiration date is May 31st, 2039. In exchange for Sportsplex USA acceptance of liability, the new expiration date would be May 31st, 2049. The recommendations on the table are two options. One option, receive staff report and provide direction regarding the extension of the Sportsplex, the Sports Park Maintenance and Operations Service Agreements with Sportsplex USA. An option to approve the Seventh Amendment to the Sports Park Maintenance and Operations Service Agreement and authorize the city manager to execute the Seventh Amendment. Available to answer any questions if needed. Thank you.
Speakers left?
No speakers.
Okay, we don't have any speaker slips. But one thing that I wanted to make clear, though, is why we're having this conversation, and because most people understand that this is actually a city property. And when you have city property, you have to go through certain procedures in order to do any kind of work on them. And that's what brought this up, is because there was no council approval of this project, or even staff approval of the project. And so there is a consequence is that we can't accept this as completed. And, but we can go ahead and let them handle all the maintenance and, you know, anything that goes wrong with it. And they've agreed to do that. They have been a very good partner in our community since they started, and some people wonder why they would want to extend out as far as they have. And the main reason for that, and I will disclose that I have actually talked to the operator of this, because I knew they couldn't be here tonight. And the reason is because the further out they have an extension on their agreement is that they can actually begin to make plans for a distance, you know? For instance, a lot of the big tournaments that they may have want to have an agreement, you know, several years in advance. And if you only go by three years, five years, or maybe even a seven-year term, people aren't going to come here because they don't know what's going to happen in that short period of time. And because most of the big groups, they want to have those agreements longer in advance also. So any questions or comments by council?
I will. Nope, you want to go first?
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree. They've been, they've been great partners, and I understand that we do have an indemnification agreement with them with regards to the turf and any liability therein, correct?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
So granted, they didn't, they didn't get it run through, but by the same token, there's no electricity that goes into there. There's not even any, there's no irrigation that goes through there. It's dirt, sand, DG, and synthetic turf. At my understanding, is a lifetime guarantee on that, unlike what we have in our facilities, which is why we're having issues now. So, I mean, these guys, we all know the tournaments, the type, the size of tournaments that they've brought into the city of Santee, and the only way they were able to do that is with their access to multiple parks because of their size, and they had owned multiple Sportsplex parks. But having those leases for an extended period of time does bring in these huge ones, which is why we have ESPN here, we have ESPN2 here, we have, you know, college ESPN here all the time for these crazy huge softball and Little League and POA, Peace Officer Association, and the firefighter, police officer Olympics. And, I mean, these are all events that we've been able to hold here, and they've, they've been good, I believe they've been good partners to us. In fact, I guess the community is too, because they were voted Business of the Year last year. So there's that. We've, we've done really good with this project. There's been millions of dollars that have been paid back to the city of Santee in rents, and we have a shared sales tax program with them that brings in hundreds of thousands of dollars to us as well. I think this was something that probably, I believe, should have been done with YMCA in some form or fashion, but that was before my time. So I want, I don't want to see this go away. I'd love to see this get extended. So I will make the motion to, of option number two of staff recommendations, and I will shut up now. I know.
Wow.
Just for this item.
Just for this item.
Yeah, so they want to extend it to 2049? Is that what they're asking for?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And the reasoning, what's your understanding of the reasoning for that?
I think the mayor and Councilmember McNell stated perfectly well. They want to be able to strategically plan for upcoming events, and sometimes you need that kind of commitment up forward, upfront, to make sure that these big major box-rated tellers like ESPN and any large sport organizations can have that commitment.
They do 20-year contracts?
What was that?
They do 20-year contracts with those?
I've seen, I've seen those agreements before, and sometimes they're relatively pretty large, sometimes 20, 30, 5 years. So realizing this and seeing the 2049 clause there, it's not a surprise to me.
Okay. Sean, do you have any issue?
We've covered the city's liability issues in the document.
Okay, and what was the cost that Sportsplex ended up paying, not the city?
$180,000.
Versus, why, why is such a discrepancy in price from the bid that you got to how, you know, the cost that they actually did?
The public contracting code allow essentially adds a lot of miscellaneous charges, so that's, that's kind of a process that we went through. I'm not sure if Steve could probably add some light to that.
Yeah, I had prepared the original bid for the $676,000 contract. It was supposed to be a little bit larger facility with the white arena walls, more like what the other two fields were. It had additional lighting, sports lighting that went with it, bleachers, seating, and concrete walkways. But the cost to build to that level was not the price that they could afford, essentially, and so they decided not to move forward with that.
So, so they could have technically scaled down the project and then gone out for, to bid through the proper method and maybe paid a little bit more, but, I, I mean, you're, you're saying that what was bid has been scaled down and that's what they built?
Correct. That's the reason the substantial difference in price. So had, had staff been directed to go and bid just a mere synthetic turf or replacement, we would have probably seen prices.
Similar?
Similar to what they received.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that point, because I do think that they should go through proper channels, regardless if they're a great partner, which they are, and we all know they are. So for me, yes, I would like to, you know, extend the contract, but if something like this happens again, I'd like a caveat that it's revoked. Because I'm, I am not comfortable with them circumventing our city to have something done.
Well, and that remains in the document. I mean, our, our, you know, they, they didn't follow the rules on this particular item. We've made them aware of that. So there would be other remedies available if they were to do this again. In this situation, given just the facts and how it worked out, there's really essentially not much for us to do, other than tell them to rip it up, which doesn't make a lot of sense. So we're essentially forbearing on this issue, but that doesn't mean we're waiving it if it ever happens again. So we have all the protections that we previously had.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So Steve, thank you for, you know, a little background in there. So in the, in your presentation, Nick, it, it almost, to me, it seemed like they were identical fields, and these are not. Let's, let's be honest here and, and say these are completely different things. What they asked for originally, two years ago, was a field that was identical to what they have in the other two fields, right, Steve? With the, with the walls, with the netting, with the lighting, with the whole nine yards, right?
Correct, just not the same width and length. It was a mini field.
A smaller scale, but the same features, the same like-for-like features.
Correct, and that's what we had prepared.
So I got a question, is over there in the front of it, when they come in, where we have that glove that's there, they replaced that rubberized surface with, with turf there. Did they go through a process with us for that?
Um, it was not run through, through us.
That was not ran through our department.
Is it required?
Uh, yes, it would be required.
Okay, so why is, why would it be required to do that?
Well, this, uh, in retrospect, we were following the agreement, and they violated the agreement, but I believe that for those improvements, it was under $20,000, if I'm not mistaken. What triggered this violation was the excess of $20,000.
Okay, so yeah, I understand there's some triggers in there, but ultimately, what we have out there is turf. That's it. That, there's nothing more. There's no bleachers, there's no lights, there's no, it is literally put turf on the ground. Is that fair, Steve, and painted lines on it?
Correct. What was constructed in, in the area where the, the exhibit showed was originally natural grass turf.
Right.
Was removed and replaced with basically aggregate-based and synthetic turf, and then with striped lines for the smaller field.
Right. So it's gonna kind of get into understanding, it's like, we had grass, we had grass there that we planted back in the day, we have to water it, they have to water it, they maintain all this stuff here. Ultimately, they just replaced that surface with turf. I, I, I know they're play on and on it, but the kids were playing on it before when it was grass. It was no different than what it is. We didn't construct an arena, I guess is what I'm getting to. And, and here it's kind of says we, they constructed an arena, and they didn't, they did not, just terminology-wise, trying to get to some fairness. So another question I have is, when they replaced the padding on the walls, when they build a, a soccer office, put a shed in, things like that, do they have to go through those things with the city to get those things approved to put on the facilities?
Those things are already, um, those things are already part of the structure itself, so it would be more of a recovery maintenance.
Those are things were added after the fact. Those were not part of the original project.
That would go through the process as well. If it would, if it's, if it's proposed to exceed the $20,000, it would go through our process.
Okay, so at least that's, that's the trigger, that $20,000. Anything over that, they need to come and get an approval for any improvements at the, at the facility?
That's, that's correct, sir.
Okay.
They did come before us for the sheds and stuff, offices, best of my recollection.
Okay, before my time, so that's why I ask those questions, because I know the improvements that have happened over the years, that the money they put into the facilities for operations and things.
Yeah, the way I look at that glove area, where they removed the rubberized ground cover and put in the, that would be just facility maintenance. I mean, maintenance of that, if it's still over, anything over 20,000 then, even if it's just maintenance?
Well, it's for new capital infrastructure, that, that's the way the, the lease agreement's noted.
That would be a capital.
If it's maintenance, no.
Because I would call it maintenance.
And the argument we made the same with.
Right, and that's kind of what I'm getting to here.
If they didn't paint lines on it, we wouldn't be talking about it, because they painted lines, now all of a sudden we're, we're talking about it.
Yeah, but turf is a lot different than grass and what's underneath it. I mean, we, we all walked on it, it's, I mean, this particular thing should have gone through the city. This particular thing. I.
Yeah, I, I'm not, actually, I don't disagree with you, I, I actually 100% agree. I'm only disagreeing with, with the wording, saying this is an arena field, this is not an arena field. It, it is turf out in the, in the, in the, in the dirt, over the dirt. It's not an arena.
Yeah, rose by any other name, still a rose.
Right.
I mean, even with, uh, when, when Bill talked to me and told me about it, he called it an arena. So, so it's.
Well, words matter, so.
Words can matter, that's true, so. Is that it? Anything else?
I don't like what they did, but here we are. I'll make the motion to.
There was a motion already, is that a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, then. Let's vote on that. So you'd think this was really easy, wouldn't you?
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, that takes us to item number 13, which is acceptance and appropriation of FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funds for hazardous fuels, reductions, and defensible state, space throughout designated areas of San Diego River Corridor, Phase 1 of a, of a two-phase project. And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is some money that we've been waiting for for a while.
I'm not gonna lie, Mr. Mayor, I'm pretty excited to give this presentation right now. It's been a long, a long, many years.
Oh.
Please don't do that to me.
Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is, this item is the acceptance of the FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, or HMGP, grant, uh, that we've been waiting for quite a few years to, to find the results and get this award. The nexus of this grant was, in 2021, we started to actually track our fires, and so direction was given to our fire personnel that every single fire response that we go to in the river bottom, we would report back the actual GPS coordinates, and we started tracking this information. And so since 2021, in September till now, almost four years, uh, we are seeing an average of about 100 incidents a year along the river bottom. We had one just earlier today, the other night we had two. So we all know that this is an existential threat to our community. We have a lot of fires in this corridor that we also refer to as Wildland Urban Interface, or WUI. We proposed this project to FEMA through Cal OES, and this is kind of the big overview of it, which was to clear up the areas around the San Diego River Corridor. And what this map represents is really what the cost-benefit analysis would be, because those are all the structures, commercial and residential, that could potentially be protected should a fire break out. And you see these buffers of one mile and two miles, because depending on alignment of certain conditions, weather conditions, particularly wind, it is very easy for a fire to break out and ember cast to go a half mile, a mile or two miles. So that's what, this really was probably one of the most critical, um, pieces of information that we provided. Because one of the, one of the biggest deciding factors is, is this money going to actually net some benefit more than the initial investment? And so by doing this, we articulated what the need was, what the protection would be, and they agreed. And they said, yes, the benefit-cost analysis is, is much greater than every dollar that they're gonna put into this. The scope of the project is clearing up the San Diego River Corridor. And what you see to the left is, uh, that's actually what we call a fire break. That's a, a little bit more extreme of what we're proposing. We're talking about some defensible space. We would not be taking, uh, all of the vegetation down to barren earth like that, but we would be creating a buffer. And this is a real picture from Santee in 2021. B.C. Moyners in the back, he was running this fire, I came in on Thanksgiving. And our PSD crew created this buffer in 2021, and I'm gonna tell you right now that that buffer saved those houses. The actions of our fire crews obviously were, were important, but the work of Sam and his, and his people in PSD helped to save those homes. Now, we're proposing a similar concept around the, the, the San Diego River Corridor, pretty much from the east end of our city all the way to the west end. That will include taking some of the dense vegetation out of the San Diego River Corridor. We still want to maintain the, the beautiful scenic area and also be cognizant of the environmental impact. But there are these non-indigenous, very flammable, hazardous plants such as palm trees that you see strewn all throughout the San Diego River Corridor. So would be the removal of those, plus the removal of ladder fuels, which is dead vegetation, and also the removal of litter, which there unfortunately is quite a bit, all of which create hazardous conditions. This is a more kind of zoomed-in portion of the area that we're proposing, this work to be done. And just a little bit of a recap on the grant timeline, in January of 2022, we, uh, proposed through what we call a notice of interest that we want to do this project through Cal OES. We were invited to be a sub-applicant in April 2022. They then sent us about 100 items that they wanted for what we'll call a request for information. They gave us a pretty short window to give all that information. And I gotta commend my partner over here, Steve Miller, because a lot of departments helped out, but no department helped more than Steve Miller in us putting this grant together and articulating the need. So, uh, I, I gotta give kudos to him and, and other staff members. May 2024, we took actually a, a grant, or we accepted a grant from the San Diego River Conservancy to help pay for this. We initially advanced this grant or proposed this grant at a 25% cost match with FEMA. And so we partnered with the San Diego River Conservancy, asked them if they'd take on half of that, uh, which equates to about $900,000. And council took action in May and actually accepted their portion of that grant. We were notified in July that we are now, went from sub-applicant to sub-recipient, which means we got our award. And we have until December of 2025 to complete Phase 1, which I'll explain in just a little bit. After that, we anticipate six to 12 months of FEMA review, nothing I could do about that, we know it takes a while. And then after that, we will start our actual Phase 2 of this project. This is a two-phase project, and the first phase that has been approved now is all of the planning, all of the environmental. And what is important for this body to understand is really this is a starting point. Everything that we proposed, we hope will still, you know, be very similar when the, this, essentially, uh, this large project, uh, comes to fruition. But honestly, the amount of time and energy that Steve and other departments and myself put into this compared to what's gonna happen over the next 12 to 18 months is gonna be significantly different. So I, I say this because I, I hope that we're not surprised if the scope changes and/or the price changes by the time that this comprehensive evaluation is done. It includes outreach and education, and then truly identifying to the exact plant what can be removed and what can't. It's a lot of work. Once Phase 1 is complete and approved, which we were very confident it's gonna be approved, then we move on to Phase 2, which is actually the removal. It's, it's actually the more simple portion of this project. The grant overview, as I've mentioned a few times, this is two-phased. What we've been approved right now is for Fa- Phase 1, which is $530,000. Phase 2 is $6.7 million. All of the money for this project, which is about $7.2 million, has been set aside and cumbered for us, with the thought that we are going to be successful in moving on to Phase 2. The federal share is $6.5 million plus, the local share is $728,000. This was a very nice surprise for us. We put in our application at a 25% cost match. It was advanced by Cal OES to FEMA at a 10% cost match. I, I had questions about why, but that didn't ask too many questions, to be honest, because it was good news for us. It was approved at a 10% cost match, so our local obligation is $728,000. And as a reminder, the San Diego River Conservancy, which I articulated this to, I had a conversation with them for full disclosure, uh, their support remains $907,000. Uh, in addition, there are grant management costs that we get in addition, we were approved in addition to this grant, and there is no cost share for the grant management. It included $25,000 as pre-award, which was all the staff time in preparing this grant. Uh, Phase 1 is about $26,522. And then Phase 2, if successful, $312,000. So the recommendations is authorizing the appropriation expenditure of hazard mitigation grant funds in accordance with program requirements for Phase 1 activities, authorizing the appropriation expenditure of San Diego River Conservancy funds in accordance with all program requirements for Phase 1 activities, designating a city manager, director of finance, and director of fire of life safety, also known as a fire chief, as the applicant's authorized agents. And what that means is we're able to submit paperwork on behalf of the city. And they recommended that there's some redundancy, identify numerous people. And then authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents to accept, manage, and seek reimbursement for that as a mitigation grant. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Chief. And, um, we do not have any speaker slips on this item, but I'd like to point out that, uh, Vice Mayor Trotter, he sits on the San Diego River Conservancy Committee and represents the city of Santee and has been a part of helping us to, uh, get that grant from them. Do you, do you have anything that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I mean, we've actually gotten several grants from the San Diego River Conservancy, also from the state of California, to their, their funds, methods, and each one of those funds have gone to help, you know, pretty much the river, um, with the other cleanup that we've done previously, and then make those fire breaks, and some of the apparatus that we recently purchased for the, uh, for the fire department. I had a couple of questions for you, Chief, though, if you would. So do we have to spend all this money in, you got Phase 1, Phase 2 here, but do we have to spend it all in a certain amount of time that has to be funded, I guess?
Correct, so the total time allotment for the project is, is 36 months, but that doesn't include the FEMA's review process.
Okay.
And so they gave us until the end of December to do this first phase. But they also said in their presentation, look, time extensions happen pretty frequently. And so they're aware that there is a possibility that we may need to ask for an extension, and we just have to communicate with our reps at Cal OES.
Okay.
And, and from their experience, they said, we get it a lot with something of this complexity that things come up.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we all know the complexity of the river, at least the staff does, of the different multiple agencies we have to deal with throughout the river and for you to execute whatever we're gonna be doing. Somebody has to manage this, I would imagine, right? Staff, you know, whether you have money in there for, for all that, to get that done. But my thought, one of my thoughts was, once we clear all this stuff out, whatever we're clearing, the non-invasive, you know, plants or, and whatnot, is, you know, is part of this plan, and I think we need to think about this in perpetuity, is how do we maintain this going forward? So those fire breaks we may create, or some of the brush clearing that we end up doing, we don't want to be back in the same boat, you know, so to say, in, in, in five years or 10 years down the road, where we, you know, and I don't know how it comes either. Don't, I don't have an answer right now, I just was thinking ahead a little bit.
When we submitted for the grant, we did have to make an estimate of what we thought the ongoing costs were gonna be. And so reaching out to the other departments, we had to actually put that into the grant and sign off that we were committed to the ongoing maintenance. Now, at the time, again, this was two-plus years ago we wrote this grant, we estimated about $100,000 a year in ongoing maintenance. And. And a lot of that is honestly staff time. It's in-kind services. So we're doing some already, but the, the overall commitment is somewhat to be determined, but we had estimated about $100,000 a year.
Seems, seems like, to be honest, but it is what it is.
I think a lot of that volunteerism that we have to go down the river
Yeah.
probably will help us out also.
Yeah, and I don't know if we contact or we do plan on it, but obviously, I would imagine the San Diego River Foundation, you know, would be a good partner on this too, along with all the agents we have to deal with too. But they're, they're going to be a big part of, you know, obviously the, the ongoing maintenance, but just identifying all the, the needs and issues, you know, throughout there, which between Sam's crew and the River Foundation, they, they know a lot.
That's true. Great. Laura?
Yeah, well, obviously, I think most of the firefighters are familiar with where I live and maybe have used my backyard a time or two to get to some of these fires. So I'm very happy about this, and I know my neighbors are as well. I do have some questions to, we have funds set aside, you know, in our general fund for this, we were hoping this would happen. And the first phase can take a long time, and I know that it will take staff resources. So have we considered using some of that money that we set aside to hire a consultant or a project manager or somebody that is also familiar with FEMA to help us move through this process?
Well, I have lots of ideas of how to spend that money. But to answer your question, we have had, staff has had some pretty comprehensive discussions about what would be the best route of utilizing not only our funds, but also that management, the management component. Because we do get some funds for management costs, which is staff time. We do have $25,000 we're getting forced work that we'd already done. And then, correct, we do have kind of a bucket of money now that is somewhat just sitting there, that council will get to make a decision of what's the best use of it. And we, we do believe that there's a couple of viable options on the table as far as what we would call that individual and how they would help us.
All right, so you're going to bring something back to us then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great. All right.
Let's go through Phase One.
All right. Well, I'm going to stand by my motion then. And you're going to second that, right?
I did, yes.
All right, then. Let's vote then. Thank you. Good job, Chief. A lot of money bringing into the city from federal government.
Motion carries unanimously.
Pay a lot of taxes. I'm glad to see you coming back to us. All right. Well, this is going to be another Justin show here, I think. And it's Item 14, which is resolution authorizing expenditure in the San Diego Regional Fire requirements and purchase of one new HME Type III Model 34 Wildland Brush Engine from HME Incorporated per Sourcewell Contract Number 113021-HME with select add-ons per competitive bids.
Okay. I'm going to try to make this one brief because in January, this body accepted a grant from the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation, a little bit different than the San Diego River Conservancy, although they work very closely together. And what they did is they reached out to us and said, hey, you're one of a few agencies that qualify for apparatus grants. And this body accepted some of the funds through resolution to purchase what we call a Type III fire engine or a brush rig. I've already articulated the need in our previous presentation, and we had to provide this information to San Diego Regional Fire Foundation because it was competitive. And we had to state, hey, look, we have a lot of fires, which we've already talked about, and we do have a need for this other apparatus. The grant details I already mentioned was invitation only. You had to have a fire station in certain geographic areas when Station Four and Station Five qualified. We already have this type of apparatus at Station Four. And reason why we need one at Station Five, one, we go to a significantly higher number of wildland fires these days. That's just what we do. We respond to wildland fires on a daily basis. We do go to quite a few structured fires, but our apparatus now are typed specifically for the type of incident that we go to. And then in addition, this type of apparatus, also known as a Type III, we share these resources up and down the state of California. And I've had to make some hard decisions as well, some other chief officers around the county of San Diego recently, and say, I can't share this very valuable resource with Northern California right now because I don't have a backup. I need something down here for fighting our fires, which I already showed, we go to one pretty much every other, every other day. So what this allows us to do, it allows us to have not only an additional resource to fight our fires here, but it allows a little bit of redundancy so we could support the greater mission from the state of California and the master mutual aid system of providing resources up north, also having something down here, knowing that they're going to reciprocate at some point. This was a 65%, 35% split. San Diego Regional Fire Foundation come up, came up to 65%. And the, the really cool thing about this presentation and this grant is typically an apparatus like this will take two to three years, from the time you order to the time you get it. Chief Bagley's not here, but he worked with our battalion chiefs, and they were able to find a chassis that's readily available. And this was, we're very fortunate. Finance worked hand in hand with, with the fire. And we now have the ability to potentially get expedited delivery and have an apparatus prior to the end of this calendar year, which is, I'll tell you right now, other chief officers are very jealous of this throughout the county because how long it takes for the production of a fire engine these days. And for an idea of what this looks like, this is almost the identical picture. Obviously, we'll have Santee striping, but this is an HME Type III Model 24, very similar to the one that we have at Station Four. So the recommendations, before my voice goes away, authorize the purchase of one 2024 HME Type III Wildland Brush Engine from HME Inc. per Sourcewell Contract in the amount of $593,410. Authorizing the purchase of add-ons such as graphics, radios, fire curtains, air conditioner, et cetera, in the amount not to exceed $33,625 per informal bidding procedures. And authorize the expenditure of San Diego Regional Fire Foundation grant funds in the amount of $407,174, and the expenditure of the vehicle acquisition funds in the amount of $219,862 for a total purchase price of $627,036. And lastly, authorize the city manager to, to execute all necessary documents.
Thank you very much. Any speaker slips on that?
No, sir.
Great. Council members? Ron?
Well, it's just nice, the last two items, we actually are getting items, getting money rather than having to spend it like we normally do. That's been really a good evening.
Motion to approve.
OPM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, coming down to the wire here. Item number 15. This is an annual event that we have to take action on, and it's a selection of a voting representative and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. And just a little background, the League of California Cities is an organization that was created in 1998. And it's when the California state legislature became very intrusive into what's going on in communities throughout California. They're still going all these years later, 125 or 125 years later. And I have the pleasure of sitting on the statewide board of directors, and so I am representing there. And I will be attending that along with council members, Koval and Hall. And so my recommendation is that since I'm the state director, I'd be selected as the person that is the voting representative, and then, of course, having the other council members as the alternates.
Motion approve.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any speaker slips on that?
No, sir.
Thank you. Any council comments? Thank you. Please vote.
First or second?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. So anyways, this takes us to our next round of non-agenda public comment. Speaker slips?
One speaker, sir. John Hasek.
Thank you. Mr. Hasek.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Vice Mayor. I just really came to just say thank you. We just celebrated for the SMOWAC buddies backpacks, celebrated 10 years of giving out backpacks. We gave out over 13,000 backpacks and growing.
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to think we did that all one year because that's not possible.
Yeah, it's over 10 years. Well, this year we had roughly about, I'd say, going on 1,100. We literally, this last week, we handed out the last of our backpacks. So every single backpack that the community donated will go and has gone to a child or a student in our community. That is by no single achievement by any one person. Literally, the entire community and, and for you guys as a city council, I really appreciate for there's every single one of you have assisted this program over the years. It is deeply appreciated. It is very heartfelt, and it is definitely worthy. And so thank you for your participation and thank you for your commitment to the community and its public servants. So I thank you.
Thank you, John.
Real quick, I, I just want to add a little something to that. You know, we all, we all know we lost, we lost Buddy a few years ago, and I just want to say how much I appreciate John Hasek for carrying this on and spearheading this since then. I know there's many people, as he's stated, behind the scenes that help out, but it, it does take one person to keep the dream alive, and, and John's been amazing at, at helping to make that happen. So brother, you're, you're very much appreciated, not only by us, but by the community as a whole. So thank you for all you do.
All right. That takes us to city council reports. Ron, anything? Laura?
Oh, yeah. It's short. So I wanted to give a shout out to Greg Gagnon, who is the owner of the UPS store in Santee. He celebrated his 10-year anniversary and had a grand reopening because it's completely remodeled inside. So if you haven't been, it's really great. You don't have to wait out on the sidewalk anymore if you, you know, if there's three people in line. So shout out to him. And then also to Santana alumni. I, I am a big supporter of the Olympics. I love watching the Olympics. That's like my Super Bowl. And we have a local Santana graduate, his name is Alex Bowen, and he competed on the Olympic water polo team. I think they won the bronze, if I'm not mistaken. Silver, sorry. So I thought it was bronze. He is the first ever athlete from Santana to win a medal in the Olympics. Also, only the second athlete, thank you, Adam Paul, for this, only the second athlete from either Santana or West Hills to ever medal in the Olympics, joining Stephen Strasberg, who was a member of the 2008 collegiate national team, which also earned a bronze medal in the Summer Games in Beijing. So congratulations to Alex. He has a lightning arm. The other team was definitely afraid when he had the ball. It was, I watched a lot of Olympics. I mean, women's rugby was exciting. The men's gymnastics team and that Superman with the, I mean, that was exciting and fun. It was just a great, great events. But I want to give a special shout out to the sports I competed in in high school and college, which were shot put and discus. We are, oh my God, I'm blanking on his name. I apologize. But three, three Olympics in a row, oh my gosh, I'm blanking. Ryan Crowzer, thank you. Ryan Crowzer won the gold medal in the shot put. He is the world record holder. The shot put for men's Olympics weighs 16 pounds. So imagine a 16-pound bowling ball. He has thrown that 77 feet. So congratulations to Ryan. And then the women's discus, Valerie Almond, a back-to-back world, world champion and Olympic gold medalist in the discus, and she threw, I believe, 230 feet or right around there. So, I mean, she hooked it. And it was just super exciting to watch. So I wanted to just share my enthusiasm with the Olympics, and I'm just so excited it's coming to LA in 2028. Thanks.
Wow. I can't even hardly lift a 16-pound bowling ball anymore.
I agree. Heavy.
Well, let's see. Do I have anything? Nope, except that we're going off to the League of California Cities pretty soon. We did have a meeting this week. We, oh, this is pretty important, actually. The governor's office came down and talked to us about a whole lot of projects and money that's going to be available, especially for homelessness and all that kind of good stuff. And it's important now because the governor said it was important, I guess. Before that, it really wasn't important to anybody. But, so now they're going to make sure that we have money to handle some of the projects that we have going and whatnot like that. I, I'm sorry, it's, I can't help but to be a bit flippant on that because we, we've been saying for a long time that we need help, we need resources. You know, we thank the Supreme Court for making a good decision on homelessness and allowing us to go on and be able to handle those, that stuff in a different manner now. So that, was there anything else that they said really that was important other than that? Yeah, I didn't think so either. I, I have to admit, I'm going to give full disclosure, when the governor's office comes down and speaks, it's really hard to listen to them. Full disclosure. Maybe I should listen a little bit better, but sometimes my eyes glaze over with the stuff that comes out. So anyways, Dustin, you have anything before I get myself in any more trouble?
Yeah, actually, I want to piggyback on the, I'm actually excited Olympics coming in 2028, too. I think, you know, I might want, I might go, plan on going because it's, it's exciting. But, but the Winter Olympics is coming back to the United States, too, and I think it's 2034, I want to say, in Salt Lake City again. So very exciting. Yeah, whatever, it's, it's, it's coming here again soon. I actually want to ask a question, maybe probably the city manager here, but it came to my attention about three hours ago that we're closing down our park, Town Center Park East next week, and I want to see if we have an update from staff on that because I had no idea we were closing the park.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Yes, for the community, there's been information out that we are working on the synthetic turf program down at Town Center Community Park East. It's not a big shocker. You can see all of the vacant field down there. And we've been working on that for quite some time, making sure that the water that's in the, pardon me, in the underlayment underneath the field is dried out as much as possible. Staff's been able to make, work with the contractor who's been on hold for us for a little bit, waiting for that field to dry out. So we will be moving forward. We've moved all of the user groups off of the park, and we wanted to make sure we could fit in, this is my, my big plug for tomorrow night. We have our last concert in the park tomorrow night at Town Center Community Park. So we'll be, come on down. It's going to be Jimmy Buffett, not actually him because he's kind of dead, but it will be a tribute band to Jimmy Buffett. But aside from that, the contractor would not allow us to have any activities within the park while they were doing the field replacement. So that park will be closing down starting on Monday. We will have, as we've talked to council in the past, we'll make sure that we move it forward as quick as possible. And our staff team has worked really well with the contractor to make sure that we can move things onto the field and get the field replaced in a timely fashion. May take a couple more days, three or four more days than what we thought originally, but we should be able to get it all done in five to six weeks and be able to have brand-new synthetic turf that can last a minimum, we hope, of 10 years. That's the plan, and be able to move that forward for the community and the council. Thank you.
So just clarity, so the whole entire park is closed? Is the parking lot closed? Is the bridge closed? Is it, just, can you, can we give a little more information to the public?
Yes, sir.
The ones told them?
So the entire Town Center Community Park East will be closed. The two bridges leading to Town Center Community Park East will be closed. The major arterial that lead that feeds into Town Center Community Park East will also be closed, or the parking lot will be closed indeed.
Okay, and then, and city manager, you said five to six weeks? Is that accurate?
Yes, sir. Five to six weeks.
So I'm trying to do with my head real fast here, you guys. So you're talking about September 21st?
End of September.
End of September. End of September, so it's September 28th, roughly.
Roughly, yes, sir.
Be back open.
Right before daylight savings, we're hoping that the project gets done a little bit earlier. So our user groups don't have any hurdles with daylight issues at the Santee School Fields.
Yeah, we obviously, you know, had those conversations previously with the turf issues.
Yes, sir, that's an institute assessment.
So is that, I asked my question, I guess, is there any more impacts to our youth athletics after or between now and September 28th?
No, there's no impacts. The school district has committed to housing AYSO and Ravens to the entirety of their season. So they're being great phenomenal partners. The only Achilles heel to this is that we'll have to find a way to co-fund light structures for them if one daylight savings occurs because there is no lights at Santee School District fields.
So I, again, and I know the issues we have with watering and all that, I'm not trying to hash this out like crazy, but what if there's another 30-day delay or another 60-day delay? I mean, what are those impacts to our youth athletics or to that park?
Well, those impacts can be lasting, but we've done a very strategic job with REC and we've been able to move around a lot of the facility activities. Luckily, we have a great relationship with Santee Unified, Santee School District and also Grossmont, and they've been able to step up. So our hope is that they continue to step up and help out. But we are almost pretty certain that this project will be completed by the end of September. And with allowable few more days extra, if we need to make more trips, we're making our loads a little bit lighter so the road, so the road base doesn't pump anymore.
Okay, my last question is, have we noticed the community about this? Has it, because I, like I said, I'm not, I'm not being, I literally found out three hours ago. So does the community know about this? Have we noticed the community in any way, shape or form, other than the youth groups?
We informed the youth groups. Social media has been posting, so.
When does social media start posting?
If I'm not mistaken, it should have posted something earlier this week.
Then when did staff know about this, this expected closure?
We confirmed the closure early parts of July.
I've actually two questions. One, last I heard, there was supposed to be a soils test done or water test, whatever, done?
Yes, sir.
On the 29th, was that done?
Yes, there were, three tests were done.
And it came back?
The first test was a little saturated. The second test, the numbers definitely got better. On the third test, we definitely saw a lot of improvement. The big difference here is that when they had their large forklifts.
Hold on, hold on, so all three tests were done on the same day?
No, they were done spread, they were done three weeks apart.
Okay, I asked about the one on the 29th. So the one on the 20th, so you've done three, two more since the 29th?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
We just did one last week.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So the case here is that we're also using, we're riding our excavators and our heavy equipment, and it's no longer pumping and running. It moves slightly, slightly, but not in comparison to April 22nd.
All right, and then second, everything being closed off, the road, the bridges, how do we, how's law enforcement getting back there to make sure that we don't end up with an encampment back there?
Right, law enforcement has pledged to monitor that area on a daily basis, and they also have keys, and they also plan on doing patrols as well, sir.
So they're going to just go open the gates and, or open the main gate on the arterial road? Or are they going to go?
They have access to the arterial, so they have, they have key access to that road as well. But the two bridges will be blocked off with fencing.
I know, that's, but if anybody wants.
Yes, of course, of course.
That's, that's to stop honest people.
Great, yeah.
People that are not supposed to be there, that want to be there, that's not going to stop them in any way, shape or form. So how do I get, how do we make it easy? Because for law enforcement, I mean, law enforcement can drive through. It's a huge park. Reason that we have all of our large events there. So they can drive through, and it's difficult to see all the way to the very back. In fact, it's impossible to see to the very back. So, I mean, Captain, are your guys going to be able to, and gal's going to be able, you know, get across that bridge? Are they going to get out, get across that bridge? And what, what are they going to use?
We're definitely going to do a lot of foot patrols because of the access. And we do have that side-by-side now, so it's a lot smaller than a regular vehicle.
Right.
So hopefully, we can use that as well.
During this time, have you thought about maybe housing that there? You've been asking Sportsplex for one, for use of their garage that's right there next to that? Just to make it easier for your team to get in and out of that? Or are you currently using it on a daily basis?
We don't use it daily, but we do house it at the storefront.
Yeah, the Trolley, in Trolley Square.
Yeah, so even though it's a little bit far from there, we can get it there.
The idea, I want to make this as easy as possible for them to do it because the easier it is, the more likely it is that it's going to happen, and it's going to happen on a more regular basis. So if there's something we can do to help facilitate that by perhaps even asking our partners that we just extended a contract for to house that side-by-side there in their garage, which is right next to the bridge. And now, especially now that Ravens aren't using the Conex box there, they're not using the garage there right now because they have to be at the schools. So all their equipment is no longer in there during this time. I mean, if that will help, let us know because this is, I could just easily see that being taken over and bad things happening in that park.
Yes, sir, I'll bring it up to the team, and if, if we need it, then I'll reach out. And I appreciate it, thank you.
I've just, I've got, you know, anytime that we block something that large off for an extended period of time, you're asking for trouble. I, yeah, I've got, I've got definite heartburn over this, but is what it is, I guess. I, there's, I, we need to make sure that we've got lots of patrols back there. And staggered hours, not the same time, not so they have a pattern or anything of that nature, like just different times of the day, multiple times, but multiple times during the day. And I get that takes away from other stuff, but once, once you let this go for any little bit of time, there, there's going to be a foothold there, and this could be, this could be bad fast.
Anything else for reports? City manager?
I do want to also add to the discussion tonight that we have a new neighbor here in the city of Santee. Congressman Isa's office now has staff who are here Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday over in Building 6, our community services office. Dre is going to be around as much as possible. He says from 10 to 4 potentially, if there's not other activities that the congressman has him working on. So if you would like to go and visit Congressman Isa and talk with his staff, you don't have to go to an outside office, you can come straight here to Santee, to City Hall. Please call over and make an appointment, though. I think that would be much easier. So when you come, you make sure that he's there. But we do have now congressional support and congressional communication very quick and very close. So thank you.
And I talked to him the other day, I went over, met him, and he does live in Santee.
City attorney?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to closed session, which is item 16 and 17 on public employment and public employee performance evaluation. Thank you. You're welcome to stay, we'll report out afterwards. We don't know how long it's going to take, though.
All right, let the record reflect that we have come out a closed session. All council members are present. Item number 16, public employment, city clerk, direction given. And item number 17, public employee performance evaluation, direction given. That concludes all items for the agenda tonight. Meetings adjourned.